None of us want to ever experience. But what if it did happen to you? Would you know what to do? Well, Rasha Goel has more on a recent city training session and some important tips that could save your life. Now, some of the images you're about to see may be disturbing.
Active shooter killings are a tragic, unpredictable reality.
The sounds of gunfire erupt at this warehouse as a gunman suddenly begins shooting. Employees run for cover. Scenes like this play out almost every day on TV. And one day, it could happen to you. So what do you do?
Killers usually choose their victims at random. They look for easy targets. So the harder you are to see or to hit, the safer you are. When an attack starts, if you can find a way out of the location, do so.
Officials say by thinking clearly, you can improve your chances of making it out, as seen in this scenario.
Look at me, look at me. I can get us out. Stay behind me. I mean, yeah.
Use cover, something that will stop a bullet, and concealment, something that at least keeps you out of sight.
And these are just some of the pointers that were taught at this active shooter training for city employees.
It's better to be prepared, that maybe your natural tendency would be to freeze, and so you need to be thinking about it so that that isn't how you respond.
He gave me the insights of things I didn't think about.
Almost anything can be turned into an improvised weapon. Look for something that can disrupt the shooter's ability to see, breathe, or control their weapon.
Other things to remember include lock and barricade doors, turn off lights, and move away from any windows. And silence your cellphone.
Unfortunately, these things are happening. It's just, you know, we have to be kind of prepared.
We may not always be able to prevent a shooting, but if you have the tools, it could save your life. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The entire video is available on YouTube. Just search "Surviving an Active Shooter." Well, it's a way for residents in the valley to get to know their small restaurants and eateries, as well as one of their city leaders. Ana Marcos drops in for one of Councilman Paul Krikorian's Lunch with Paul events.
It may look like a vacation in Cancun, but this Mexican fiesta is right in the hood, as Councilmember Paul Krikorian holds his monthly Lunch with Paul get-together. This one at the Cactus Taqueria in Valley Village. The message: Get to know your neighbors and your councilmen, and help support small business in the valley.
I feel like, oh, what a cute place. I want to go there sometime and never quite have the hook to do it. So this gives people the hook, and they, you know, they say, oh, okay, I meant to try that place, now I'm going to go do it. And hopefully, they'll keep coming back.
Krikorian has been doing these lunches for about a year now, which means he's helped about a dozen of these businesses get their name out in the community.
These lovely people with their knees are the one-story homes. This is going to be in the backyard of...
But the neighbors also come to get the councilman's ear and find solutions to problems in their neighborhood. Some residents complain about homelessness.
I have my issues with the homeless on the freeway on-ramps, on the off-ramps, living on park benches, in front of Gelson's, in front of Trader Joe's, in the hand-handling.
Others are up in arms over a proposed development in their community.
All our houses are sweet little, like, you know, one-story bungalows, California bungalows. This subdivision looks like a prison.
Krikorian talks to all. He promises to walk through the neighborhood to see what can be done about zoning and new development. Some of his constituents applied a new stop sign in the area, and one woman concerned about crime has now teamed up with police.
We were able to put her together with her senior lead officer, and hopefully, they're going to be creating a neighborhood watch in that area.
Sometimes, Krikorian has to skip the Mexican fiesta. With all the citizens wanting his attention, there's often just no time for lunch. Today is one of those days, which just gave him another reason to come visit this small establishment again. I'm Ana Marcos for LA This Week.
Well, Councilmember Krikorian says he's looking at visiting other small establishments besides restaurants, because other small merchants need the love and the business too. While you'll soon be seeing more parks and open space in LA, two local citizens received special honors from the city for their bravery and initiative, and an annual tradition showcases the unique flavor of a local neighborhood. All these stories in City B. There will soon be more parks in LA after the city council approved a new ordinance updating the city's old development fees program for the first time in more than three decades. The changes will boost funding for parks and open space in Los Angeles by charging fees to apartment developers, which were generally excluded from the fees. The new rules will also let the city spend the funds in a wider area than previously allowed. LAPD Officer Donald Thompson, who was awarded the Medal of Valor last May by President Barack Obama, was honored in City Hall by Councilmembers Mitchell Englander, Paul Coretts, and Nuri Martinez. Thompson, who has been with the department for almost three decades, rescued a driver from a burning car in December of 2013 and saved the man's life. He says that while he appreciates the accolades, he just did what had to be done.
Down inside, I don't really feel as if I'm, quote, a hero. I did something to help someone in a time of need.
This is what police officers and firefighters, our first responders, are all about. The fact that they put their lives on the front line to protect complete strangers.
Another hero was recognized by the city. Clean streets hero Rosie Brown was honored recently by the Board of Public Works for her hard work in cleaning up her neighborhood.
If you have to be involved, you have to have an actual, you know, connection with the city. You have to connect you with your neighbors. You have to be able to go out there, greet them, say, hey, let's keep our neighborhood clean.
The Clean Streets program was started by Mayor Eric Garcetti to encourage folks to take action to clean up their neighborhood streets and keep them clean. City officials say community leaders like Rosie are an inspiration to all.
We love seeing volunteers like Rosie, that really are the heartbeat of their community.
The 10th Annual Frog Town Art Walk was held recently in Elysian Valley along the LA River, featuring dozens of special exhibits from local artists and craftmakers. It also offered a variety of food selections from local eateries and musical performances. City Councilmember Mitchell Farrell said he's proud to sponsor the event.
One of the premier events in northeast Los Angeles, if not the whole city, for art and culture and people from the neighborhood and beyond to just come on a hot August evening and have a good time.
As we inch closer to the presidential election, the drive is on to lure more Latinos to the polls. Their numbers are huge in California, but for some reason, many of them don't vote. The mayor is teaming with a Hollywood veteran to help change things. Gil Reyes reports.
Heading into November's elections, actor-director Edward James Almoze launches a Spanish-language, nonpartisan "Get Out the Vote" campaign.
It's a campaign that's called Este Año, To Vote, Es cosa seria. And that, to me, is the essence of one of the great commitments that the mayor has for getting registered, and if you are registered, to vote.
The star of Stand and Deliver and Blade Runner is featured in a series of public service announcements airing on Spanish-language TV. Almoze's campaign has the support of Mayor Eric Garcetti, who spoke at this year's Latinos and Society Summit. Since taking office, the mayor has urged non-U.S. citizens to become citizens so they too can cast ballots. People can visit LA City libraries for help.
So inside every library, there's a citizenship corner. There's a librarian trained in helping people go down that pathway. And I stood up a new Office of Immigrant Affairs for the first time since the Haun administration. And we've helped 50,000 people in the city of LA begin or finish their pathway to citizenship.
Now, if only they voted. While Latinos make up nearly 40% of California's population, the latest numbers show just 24% are registered voters, and even fewer Latinos actually cast ballots. The hope is ads like these will help boost those numbers in this all-important election year. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
U.S. citizens can register to vote at clerk.lacity.org/elections. While over in Hollywood, they're not the Oscars, but they still shine the spotlight on Emmy-nominated shows that are made right here in LA. Rasha Goel has the highlights.
Just like Dorothy said, in the classic Wizard of Oz, there is no place like home.
Hollywood is the home for production, and the term "roll camera" is being heard more often all over the city. Coinciding with the Emmys, Councilwoman Mitchell Farrell's Made in Hollywood Honors recently recognized 18 Emmy-nominated productions.
Anyone who knows the show, we love LA. We just sit around making up jokes about LA, and they stay in the show. So, thank you all. We're so happy to be here and be honored.
TV shows such as Modern Family, Veep, and The People vs. O.J. Simpson were awarded for keeping their productions in Los Angeles.
There's a very large writing staff on a comedy, usually 13 to 15 people. And there's a lot of conversation with the network and the studios on content, because comedy does break barriers sometimes in certain subject matters and things like that. So it's much easier if they come to table reads and they have the dialogue right there.
This is Hollywood. There are great secondary markets, but they're just not Hollywood here. I mean, look at the weather. It also means you're never rained out on a production. As a producer, that means so much. I can't tell you how much money is lost when you go to other places and you have to delay because of a rain day.
Made in Hollywood Honors was launched in 2011 and recognizes both Oscar- and Emmy-nominated projects produced in the state of California, and this year, the list of honorees grew 20%.
We know that the film and television tax credit that the state honored us with has made a huge difference.
Shows such as Veep, who used to film in Maryland, have returned to LA.
The show was really fortunate they were able to apply for and get the tax credit. I think the huge benefit of moving to LA is that the writing staff and the cast and the crew all get to be close to their families.
Out of our 160,000 members across the country, 90,000 are LA locals. So do you realize that when we have production here and people can sleep in their own beds, they can go to their kids' soccer games?
The message here is pretty clear: There is no better place to shoot than Hollywood. From the City of Dreams, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
As important it is to keep production going in LA, it's just as important that post-production stays here too. Rasha Goel has more on a top post-production company that's infusing money into the city and its community. Rasha?
Yana, I'm here at FuseFX, a new 27,000-square-foot facility which provides post-production and visual effects for shows such as American Horror Story, The Walking Dead, and Empire. Now, the opening of this facility represents what the City of Angels is doing to keep production and post-production in Los Angeles, helping both Angelenos and the economy. FuseFX, which has helped lead the resurgence of visual effects production in Los Angeles, was founded in 2006, at a time when many visual effects companies were curtailing operations in Los Angeles. Having been in LA for a decade, their new location in Sherman Oaks positions them within easy reach to studios and independent production companies.
The opening of this new office in Los Angeles is a bet that we can continue to lead the rebirth of visual effects in LA. Even with AB 1839, there's continued pressure to move work to Canada and other tax rebate locations with more extensive benefits. That makes it an ongoing challenge to sustain growth and stability in LA, but we've shown it can be done.
It will provide many benefits to our communities and the local economy by attracting hundreds of jobs and talented individuals to the San Fernando Valley, and generating tax dollars for her neighborhood benefits.
The state has set aside $330 million in tax credits for productions in California. Last year, the city already saw an influx in productions.
LA City is becoming increasingly a business-friendly city, a place where we're lowering our gross-receits tax, a place where we're making it easy to do filming, we're giving our city buildings to productions, and I think that's a reflection of why 82 pilots filmed here in the city of LA last year more than any city in the world.
With 175 employees, FuseFX aims to tap into the talent and resources in LA.
The range of talent that we're able to draw from here, we probably have an average of 15 years' experience with almost every employee we have, and there's no other place in the world you can do that.
Altino expects the company's Los Angeles staff to eventually reach 250. In Sherman Oaks, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The mayor also says efforts continue to provide more incentives that work both for the city and productions. Well, beautifying your local neighborhood park can leave you beaming with pride, and in South LA, community members have plenty to be proud of. Gil Reyes explains how some new turf can prove to be a game changer in this fifth year of drought.
What a difference in the South LA neighborhood. About a year ago, the soccer field at Trinity Recreation Center was an unsafe, uninviting dirt lot. Now look at it. It's green and gorgeous, but that's not grass they're playing in. It's synthetic turf. This plan, literally a game changer. Last year, the Department of Recreation and Parks announced plans to refurbish 100 or so of its soccer fields made of grass or dirt with synthetic turf. This park is the 39th park to do that. Since there's no grass to maintain, the turf, made of a mineral called zeolite, is expected to save half a million gallons of water per year at Trinity alone. Councilman Curran Price says the city kicked in new playground equipment, security cameras, and lighting for good measure.
The improvements that have been made were largely done because of a group of mothers who were here who said that, you know, we just want better for our kids. They were very active in lobbying, as a matter of fact, for the city council. We were to secure funding for many of the improvements that we'd made.
But not everyone's a fan of artificial turf. Though you save money on your water bill, some say you're more likely to get injured playing in it. But soccer Hall of Famer and former U.S. National Team midfielder Hugo Perez disagrees.
I played on this turf also when I was a pro, and anybody can get hurt in anywhere. You know, it doesn't have to do with the field. I think the field is great, but the young kids is perfect. You know, it's flat, the ball rolls well. What else you want? I mean, this is great. I mean, you get kids from Central America, South America, Asia, Africa, and you bring them to a field like this, they're in heaven.
You need to be proud of your parks in your community, because, well, you know what? We need you guys to take care of them. We can't do it without you. So we need all of you guys to help and participate in that. So just promise me, all you guys, promise me that you'll do that? Good.
In South LA, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Department of Recreation and Parks says all of their newly refurbished soccer fields will save the city 63 million gallons of water per year, and even more transformations are coming to save the city even more water. While heading north now to Boyle Heights, where many folks came out to make sure they got their hands on a piece of LA history. As Gil Reyes reports, the now demolished Sixth Street Bridge was near and dear to many people's hearts.
With rock music blaring in the background, hundreds stood in line to get a piece of downtown history.
What brought me here is for the Sixth Street Bridge Rock. This is very important to me because I grew up here and I've been on Sixth Street Bridge my whole life. My mom told me about it, and me and my boyfriend used to skate it all the time. So this means a lot to us.
Welcome to Rock Day LA, a time to remember the original Sixth Street viaduct overlooking the LA River, a bridge that for decades graced many Hollywood films and linked downtown to the East Side. People got a chance to pick up free souvenirs from the structure. First come, first served.
My office, along with the Bureau of Engineering, are giving away 1,000 rocks that came from the demolition of the Sixth Street Bridge. As many of you know, we unfortunately had to demolish our 1932-built Sixth Street Bridge because the materials that were used to construct it is making itself, eating itself up from the inside. One of the most iconic bridges in the city of LA, and a lot of people have emotional attachment to the bridge. They either crossed it, their parents crossed it, they saw it in the movies. So everyone wants a little, a piece of their bridge.
There you go. Got a couple rocks. I figured I'd get some rocks in it, because that's what caused the bridge to fail, so a little bit of LA history.
And what did you get?
Oh, I got a little bigger piece.
It's fun to watch. Some people want ones that are shaped as a heart, some people want ones that are flat, some want ones small. The kids love the really large ones, so it's just fun to be out here and sharing a piece of this history with the community.
An all-new Sixth Street Bridge is under construction and set to open in 2019. From Rock Day LA in downtown, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Collectors also walked home with certificates of authenticity and "Rock Day LA" t-shirts. While enjoy one final summer bash with tributes to Prince and David Bowie, learn everything you've ever wanted to know about going green during the LA Green Festival, and sail the open sea on a tall ship. All this and this week's Things to Do. The Los Angeles Zoo's 1980s-themed Roaring Nights summer music series, featuring tributes to Prince and David Bowie, offers a totally tubular way to end the summer. The party for ages 18 and up keeps the hits happening and the tunes tight, while transforming the zoo into one bodacious bash. Legendary '80s DJ Richard Blade spins the best music of the era, and two additional DJs oversee a one-of-a-kind silent disco, with individual musical choices offered via wireless headphones filled with lots of Bowie, Prince, and more. Roaring Nights also includes LA's favorite food trucks, full-service bars, and a neon paint party for guests. It all happens on Friday, September 16, from 7 to 11 p.m. at the LA Zoo. For more, visit lazoo.org. The LA Green Festival is a vibrant, dynamic marketplace where companies and organizations come to showcase their green products and services, and where people go to learn how to live healthier, more sustainable lives. You can shop and enjoy vegan, vegetarian, organic foods, hands-on demos, educational activities, and inspirational speakers. The festival takes place September 16 through the 18 at the Los Angeles Convention Center. For more, visit greenfestivals.org. Sail the San Pedro Bay and watch the sunset from the deck of a tall ship during the tall ship's family adventure sails. You can sit back and relax or become part of the crew, your choice. All ages are welcome. Be sure to wear soft-soled shoes. Layered clothing is recommended, and don't forget to bring your sense of adventure. Sailing vessels provide unparalleled access to coastal ecosystems, in addition to introducing students to the art and science of sailing. Learning comes to life aboard those tall ships on Saturday, September 17, at berth 78 in San Pedro. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Cain from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
What if a disaster strikes without warning? What if life as you know it has completely turned on its head? What if everything familiar becomes anything but? Before a disaster turns your family's world upside down, it's up to you to be ready. Get a kit, make a plan, be informed today.
Hi, I'm Jen Mahoney in Studio City. You're watching LA City View Channel 35, where you can get the best in culture and arts. It's our city, it's our channel. It's our city, it's our channel.
Hey, just go!
Good morning, sergeants call the members. Have the members report to the council chambers. I do want to give a big thank you to Mr. Bonin, Englander, Harris Dawson, and Price for being today's members of the on-time caucus. Okay, sergeants call the members, have them report to the council chambers. Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers so that we can begin our business for today. I do want to thank again Mr. Bonin, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, and Price. Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers so we can begin our work for today. Mr. Bloomingfield has arrived. Wednesday, September 14th, I want to welcome you to City Hall, welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m. Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscano, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Carrasco, Quarian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, West, and 10 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Bloomingfield moves. Bonin seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Price moves. Ms. Martinez seconds, next.
Mr. President, there are recommendations to continue Item 2 to September 21st and Items 3 and 5 to September 27th.
Okay, so without objection, that'd be the order. Continue.
Excuse me, Mr. President, item 4 is also requested to be continued to September 27th.
So without objection, that'll be the order?
Very good, sir. Item 1 is an item noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, continue.
Items 2 through 12 are items which public hearings have been held. The committee report for Item 12 has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, members, specials. Members, then let us prepare to vote. Let us prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Thank you. Continue. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 12 forthwith, please.
Item 12, forthwith, without objection.
Very good, sir. Items 13 through 17 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so do we have cards? Oh, no. Without objection, those items are before us. So now, do we have cards on these items?
Yes, sir. Cards on all items.
Okay, we'll hold those. Continue.
Mr. President, it takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn, if you come forward. Mr. Previn has cards on Items 1 and 14. And we'll give him his general public comment as well. So, Mr. Previn, please come forward. Mr. Previn?
Also, Item 12, sir. But I will start with Item 14.
Okay, I don't know if we... In fact, Mr. Previn, hold his time. That was already adopted and sent forthwith.
There was no hearing in committees.
No, Mr. Previn, so it's Items 1 and 14.
Mr. City Attorney?
You can have his time. No, not Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Previn. You're on Items 1, and, Mr. Clerk, you can move his time. 1 and 14.
Okay, for the record, Number 14 is obviously the very important LA Metro item coming forward. I believe it's Measure M that people are looking to move forward and support. The Coney Board of Supervisors is the one who put it together. The proposed ordinance is to improve freeway traffic, repave local streets, create jobs, which has been challenged, and authorize traffic improvement and continue the existing half-cent traffic relief tax until voters decide to end it. Now, the folks who are challenging it legally in the item, which I read about, are concerned about a number of things. One, they feel that you guys have violated the law, or the people who made this, by accepting the ballot title and label in an unlawful form for printing and distribution to the elections in LA County. They're concerned that the language in particular that you use at the end, "until voters decide to end it," is vague, they feel, confusing, and also misleading. And they feel that it prejudices voters, in a way. And, in fact, the language should not be misleading, and it must reasonably inform the voter of the character and the real purpose of the proposed measure. And what they're upset a little bit about, sir, is that nowhere does it mention the tunnel from Sherman Oaks, affluent community A, to the West Side, affluent community B. And they feel that there should be, that that should be explicit, and they also feel that the amount of money, which is about 800 and something million dollars per year, should be explicit, that this is what this is going to generate. And the biggest issue is that they're concerned that by referring to it as a little half-cent temporary matter, you're not stating the truth, which is what this, if you vote for this purpose, you'd be voting for a one-cent permanent. So, you know, I think people are sympathetic to the fact that we need to do something, but there is serious concern. And, you know, when the city resources are being deployed as they are, we take notice. And Item Number 12, which is the item to extend the lease at Union Bank for the sixth-floor ITA facility for Channel 35, where #Bloomingfields knows this telecast is originated, we're going to move it to the Merced Theater, sir, per your $23 million initiative. And quite frankly, that has caught the public's attention because this is, this is a body that should not be building a television studio to lather itself up. This is, in fact, a body that should be providing affordable housing with the appropriate ADA-compliant housing and various other things that you've not been doing. And so, to try to sneak this through under the suggestion that you took a hearing in committee when there were, in fact, no cards submitted during that hearing in committee, and to then try to deny the public the opportunity to actually address that matter is a complete abnegation of your professional responsibility. And quite frankly, people should know that what you are conceiving is a state-of-the-art. And I want to just take a moment to compliment Bloomingfield and Channel 35. They do a nice job. These guys are doing a kind of a Pravda newscast. And I'm not saying it should be the investigative journalism place, but when you take your own city rules, violate them repeatedly, like Council Rule 93, sir, which requires that you frame everybody the same, but you'll note right now on this channel, and by the way, ITA guys, you should take out the bleeding in of the Spanish into the English track, as Sean and other members of the public have noted, but you'll see that I'm tiny. I appear, in fact, the size of #Bloomingfields knows. So this is the problem with the Item 12 on your agenda today. Even though we understand it's only a 13-month delay and that all these millions of dollars are going to be working nicely to get a nice set of barber shop chairs for all of the council members to get haircuts and look great on television, but to be fair, sir, you ought to do the right thing and put it on the agenda where the rest of the public can understand what you're up to, okay? So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Do you want your general public comment? One minute?
Yes, thank you. For the Metro item, I would just say, sir, that if, I don't know if it's been considered recently, but bar cars, because this body really does like to introduce liquor licenses, I don't think if we're going to be moving forward with so much train activity, which I love. And by the way, that group, that Item 14 wanted to call it not the traffic measure, but the transportation measure, to include those other aspects. In conclusion, I'm just going to reach to Bonin and any of you who have a heart and ask that this weekend, the Malibu Nautica Triathlon is being held out in Zuma Beach, one of our glorious, treasured beaches. Unfortunately, Herbalife, a group that was written about in the LA Times by Michael Hiltzik recently, in July 18th, has fallen down. This is a group that is operating a pernicious pyramid-like scheme, and they are also sponsoring a Malibu triathlon. So I've asked Sheila Kuhl and I've asked Carrick, who's very, very attentive to these matters, and Mayor Garcetti himself, to intervene and not allow...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Thank you, sir. Ms. McAllister, please come forward. Ms. McAllister, and you have Items 1, 15, 17, and your general public comment.
1, 15, 17, yes, and my public comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Number 1, the housing. I'm very concerned, excuse me, I'm speaking, I'm very concerned about the homeless. I don't know which freeway or streets you guys take home, but you need to drive around under the freeways and see the people laying on the street all through the communities. Especially, I'm concerned about Huzaar, right here, Council District 14. He's sitting right here on my left. He has over 4,000 homeless people in his district. That's about 15 blocks of people laying on the street, but he comes in the City Hall and throw away my speaker card so that I can't tell the people what's going on here. We need people like me to come in here and tell the people who are voting for you guys what's going on. You cannot stop us. You got us down to 2 minutes. Yesterday, they only let me speak 2 minutes.
Stay on Item 1, Ms. McAllister, please.
Excuse me, I am on Item 1. I'm on Item 1 about this housing. Now quit stopping me. We've got lawsuits going on. I filed claims since February against you guys for not allowing me to speak and for violating the Brown Act, and I just got a response 6 months ago, because yesterday, because I went over there and raised sand. Now that's number 1. We need to get Huzaar out of office and get somebody in there who's going to look out for the people of this city. Now, Number 15, consideration relative to reprogramming community development block grant money. You're talking about $680,000. You're throwing out these numbers, you're not telling us where this money is going. Are you hiring black people? Every time I walk by a construction site, I go over there and talk to them, they can't speak English. Illegal aliens. I go over there and ask questions. I say, "Do you have affordable housing?" No habla inglés, you know, whatever. I don't speak Spanish.
Stick to the item, though.
I'm on Number 15, I am. We need to know, are you hiring minorities? We need some accountability here. You're not just throwing out money. And the same thing with Number 17. Here, you're talking about you want 40 million. What kind of crap is this? 40 million for what? You just can't say we're giving 40 million. Tell me what it's for. That's a lot of money. That's very vague. Okay, so we need to know, are you also abiding by the minority contract laws? I don't think you are, because I go to these meetings, committee meetings, and they claim that the computer is not set up for it yet. I'm from Chicago. You can go online and see who's getting contracts. Here, you act like you're back in the 1930s. You're using all this money, I don't know where it's going besides your pockets, okay? We need to do something. We need some accountability. We need to get some Republicans. I understand you have one Republican on this council. We need to replace all of you, and I'm talking to the people of this city. We need to get some new people here because it doesn't make any sense that we have to go outside and walk by people laying on the street with five and six carts and all of that. It's very sad. I don't know what kind of heart you have, but my heart is sensitive to that. It's very sensitive. And for you to be our council members, we elected you.
Ms. McAllister, let's deal with the senior housing.
The senior housing. I know it's senior, but I still say 40 million is too much because you are not laying out what you're using it for. I know about contracts. I used to do contract negotiation in Chicago, so I know about it. I had a business. We need to know who's getting the contracts. If illegals are getting it, when I say illegals, the people who own the companies, they're not illegals, but they hire the illegals. Those are our jobs. That's why we have people on the street, because they don't have jobs. So that is related to this, and this council has done nothing. I cannot go online to your website, I'm always on your website, and see who your minority contractors or your women contractors. I can't see that. Now, I did do a Freedom of Information on the city attorney's office. That's my public comment. So I'm doing Freedom of Information, and again, I filed about 8 claims by you guys throwing me out of meetings, telling me what I can't say, and I just got some of them back 6 months later. Because we're going to start taking you to court. Now my public...
Thank you. Now give her her minute for the general public comment. Yes, ma'am.
My public comment is about... My public comment is about city attorney. I filed a Freedom of Information, because I've been getting complaints. People come to me that you're discriminating against women, and I want this verified, because I believe it's a lie. You say you have 269 female attorneys, 68 blacks, 242 non-white attorneys, and 244 male attorneys, 513 attorneys on payroll. Now, I also asked, how many attorneys do you have as consultants? Guess what they told me? We don't keep count. You know that's a lie. Your budget is over a billion dollars almost, and that's ridiculous. Now, you also told me that you, I asked, how are you promoting women attorneys? Guess what they told me? That they promoted 69 women and 56 males. That's a lie, because women are coming to me, telling me that they're discriminating them in the, in the city attorney's office. I want this verified. I was sent, it was sent to me by your director, and I've got copies all over the place, and I want it verified. If he's lying, we need to file a suit against the legal department.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Walsh, Items 13, 14, 16, 17, and then your general public comment. Mr. John Walsh.
Blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or tweeting at JWalshConfidential. Number 13 is where you do a good job. I have no complaints about the way I'm treated as a tenant. When you do a good job, I'm the first to point it out. Number 14 is Measure M for mula, mula, mula. This is a measure, and it doesn't say it here, this is a sales tax forever. A thousand years from now, it'll still be there, a half percent sales tax. It works out to at least a trillion dollars for the MTA. There'll be no more cost overruns. Everything goes to the MTA, a half percent sales tax. They tried this last, two years ago, and they failed, because they need two-thirds. We must vote against it, because if you pass this, there'll be another half-cent sales tax, another half-cent sales tax. And go on the subway, go on the Expo Line, yeah, it's full of people, diverted bus riders. Our bus service has been discontinued, and we now have to take two buses and one train, where we took one train. Go, I try to, what I'm telling you right now is that it is, the ridership is terrible, it's low, they were talking about hundreds of thousands. It is very, very, very low, the ridership. All you have are diverted bus, there's no white person who's going to get on a 90% Hispanic and black rail system. In New York, it's not like that. In New York, it's integrated. Here, it's racist. It's a racist system with 70 to 80% minority, while the white people take their cars. And the next, the next item is, is Item 16, and I'm telling you right now, this is six months from the date, this is the $50,000 identification, apprehension, and conviction of person responsible for killing Dino Howard. Remember, nobody, and I'm saying it right now to the gangs that you, you're scared of, if somebody turns the killer of Dino Howard in, he will be killed, because snitches get stitches. These, and prove me wrong, give me a list of 10 people who were caught, and 10 rewards. Give me nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. None of these rewards are ever collected, because people are rightfully scared that if they turn the murderers in, then what will happen? They're going to get killed, because, go to my website, and you can see the T-shirt they sell on Hollywood Boulevard. Snitches get stitches. $40 million financing rehab and temporary tenant relocation out of 230-unit senior rental housing. The cost for the city of one rental housing, one, is twice what it is in the free market, because everybody gets their piece of the action. I'd like to go now, you can, you know what you can do with the 17 seconds. Okay, let's talk about Garcetti.
General public comment.
General public comment. This is what Garcetti said at the NHL celebration two years ago. This is a big fucking...
Come on, Mr. Walsh, no, no, no. No. Thank you. Mr. Walsh, you know better than that. You can go sit down now. You know much better than that. No, you know much better. Go sit down. Now, if I could have, if I could have Sean Murphy, Sean, come on down. I mean, you have to be respectful to the people that are translating. You cannot holler into the equipment like that, and you know that. Okay, Mr. Murph, hold on one second, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Corretts.
Yeah, I just wanted to note for the record, which I do every once in a while when the past speaker misrepresents our reward motions, just in my district alone and in my, my history, we've been able to reward several folks for the, leading us to the perpetrator of a crime. It's absolutely, absolutely not factual that we never release these rewards, because we absolutely do when we find murderers and other criminals as a result.
Thank you. And again, Mr. Walsh, we would not allow you to disrupt this meeting. Okay, Mr. Murphy, go right ahead.
I want to introduce you to somebody that just came in, the city council, surprised me from my church.
Mr. Raul, can you stand up?
Let's give him a...
Stand up, Raul.
All right, welcome, Raul, welcome. Go on, Sean, you have Items 1, and your public comment.
I filled out a card on 6, too.
Go ahead.
I filled out a card on, Item Number 1, housing. We need more housing. We got to do something about the homeless people. It's getting worse. We have to do something about the homeless. They're all over LA, even in the churches. Jose, let's do something about the homeless. Folks, I'm back from my summer break. I've been, it's good to be back. We need to keep our streets clean. Oh, yeah. Measure M, I'm voting for Measure M. If people are against it, they can do whatever they want, you know what they can do. That's it.
Now, Sean, you want your general public comment? You have one minute.
Yeah, general public comment. Anybody but Hillary Clinton. I'm sorry she doesn't, she's sick, but we need somebody better to run this country. We don't need another eight years of Obama. We need to keep the sidewalks clean. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's vote on Items 1, 13, 15, 16, and 17 at this time. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's been a request to send Item 17 forthwith, sir.
Without objection.
15 forthwith, please.
15 forthwith. Okay, so now we're going to go into Item 14. I'm going to call up for public comment Dustin Batten, Alex Davis, Zachary, I can't quite make out the last name, and John from, last name begins with a G, and Leah Renee. Yes, sir, identify yourself.
Good morning, council members. My name is Dustin Batten. I am here representing the Los Angeles County Business Federation, or BizFed, a massive, diverse grassroots alliance of more than 160 business organizations, 325,000 employers, and over 3 million employees across LA County. And I am here to express our unwavering support for Measure M. LA County as a region needs this measure to pass. Every year, BizFed conducts a robust survey of the issue's most impacting businesses and economic growth in our region. In 2015, BizFed members ranked traffic and congestion as the second-highest concern for businesses. Reducing commute times is a top priority for business owners and employees in every corner of LA County. Measure M is the solution to this problem, and we need to get behind it. Metro's plan not only addresses our transportation infrastructure needs, but it also stimulates our economy. Over 465,000 new jobs will, will come online if Measure M passes. We get none of these new jobs if we do not come together behind this measure. BizFed commends the tremendous effort by Metro in managing this historic undertaking. Their ability to galvanize a behemoth of a transportation plan across all sectors must be applauded. BizFed and our members like Fast, Move L.A., and MetroLink, and many others, are in it to win it. Thank you.
Thank you. So if I can get Alex Davis, John Gravara, Zachary, last name begins with an R, please come forward, Leah Renee.
Good morning, council members. My name is Alex Davis. I am the Legislative Affairs Manager for VICA, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, and we are proud to be here today in support of Measure M. We know that this ballot measure will transform the local transportation system for residents in Los Angeles and throughout the county by creating nearly half a million jobs and returning $80 billion in economic output to the region. Through a substantial investment and commitment to Los Angeles, residents across the city will be connected like never before. We have suffered from a historically disconnected county, and we look forward to a more robustly connected region through Measure M. Thank you to the council members who have already voiced your support for the ballot measure and for ensuring that the Valley receives its fair share in capital investments and through the local return revenues as well. Though, through a balance of addressing goods movement, capital funds for rail, and connecting all regions of the county, we believe that there is something that everybody can get behind in this ballot measure, and that's important, because we need this ballot measure to pass in November. We are excited to see how the projects included in the expenditure plan and how funds dedicated for local return will continue to transform this city into the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you. So I need John Gravara. Yes, sir, and Zachary, you're on deck, and then Leah Renee. Yes, sir.
Good morning, council members, staff, and public. My name is John Gravara, representing Investing in Place. We're an organization committed to better transportation, better quality of life, and better neighborhoods for all in LA County. Personally, I've grown up in Carson and Los Angeles my whole life, and it's a place I see myself committed to, raising a family here. And for the first time ever, we've surpassed over 4 million people in the city of Los Angeles. We're going to add over 2 million people to the County of Los Angeles as well, so we need the transportation to match those needs. Measure M is a forward-thinking policy. We've pored over every number, we've pored over every line, and we think that this measure is one that helps put families first. It will help bring on the necessary investments to modernize our transportation system so people could walk, they could bike, they could take transit, and have other options to get to school, to get to work, to get to healthcare, and to literally run or walk their errands. Investing in Place is fully supportive of Measure M, and we encourage our council members and elected officials to support this as well. It will be, single-handedly, one of the biggest public works, projects this region has ever seen, connecting people to opportunities and improving our commutes and our communities. And we have a saying that you can't get ahead if you can't get around, and we truly believe that Measure M is one that helps people of all ages and abilities get ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So Zachary, followed by Leah Renee. Yes, sir, welcome.
Hi, my name is Zachary Reinu. I'm representing the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition. We're here to support Measure M, because it makes Los Angeles County more bikable, more livable, and more connected. We're happy about the features for making the county more bikable by adding infrastructure such as the LA River Bike Path, which will be a fully-connected spine, which will link LA County. We support the fact that it's, makes LA County more livable, because of the many first-last-mile connections, because of the walking and bike infrastructure improvements that will benefit people of all ages, and connectability with all the rail connections that will be integrated with people that bike and walk to many of these stations will be very important. So, LA County Bicycle Coalition is throwing our support that Measure M will help make LA County. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Renee.
So I get, I get two comments right? Am I clear? I'm not sure how you did the process today. Am I correct? I get...
You're on Item 14.
And do I get my public comment afterwards?
No, you, right now, you're just on Item 14.
Okay, so I'd like to bring to your attention, with your transportation plan, I can't find the Pacific Coast Highway Widening Project. So is that in Measure M, or did you conceal it somewhere else? Because there's a geological problem on the hillside. I really think it's important, after four years that I've been coming to you, I have now found, my property is flat, so I shouldn't have to be here, but down slope, I've found faults, I've found geological hazards, and you're not reporting it, and you're not making it available, and the worst part of the whole thing is you're not taking care of the environment. So it's very duplicitous to say that you have a care for the climate, and then you don't provide anybody access to the facts. And geological hazards don't disappear in 10 or 20 years, you know, Earth time's a lot longer than 20 or 30 years, and I can't get them. So I hope, Mr. Bonin, if you could help us get access to all of those records, they go back to the 20s and they identify faults right at the Pacific Coast Highway. And that's really important, because you have a fast act by the federal government that you're taking money in. So is that combined with Measure M? If you could make that clear, so we all have an understanding of where the money's going to go, and how it's going to be spent, and that you're not going to wipe out our natural landforms, like the Pacific Coast Highway landform, the epic bluffs, and that you're not going to wipe up the historic Beller Bay Club, because that's the appearance right now, is that you're trying to cause an emergency to make the whole Pacific Palisades bluffs fall down, because you've issued all these exemptions that have circumvented process procedures and noncompliance with the permitting process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Bonin.
Do I get my...
No, you will, when you do multiple cards, we do that early. You have one card and public comment. When we get to public comment, I will call you.
Oh, thank you very much.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues. I rise today to ask us to support this resolution and to put the city on record as firmly being in support of Measure M. This is a huge opportunity for the city of Los Angeles and for all the other cities in, in the county of Los Angeles. Back in 2008, voters made a huge investment in Measure R, and as a result of that, we have the Gold Line Extension, and the Regional Connector, and the continued work on the subway, and the Crunch道line to LAX, and the opening just a few months ago of Phase 2 of the Expo Line. What a wise investment voters made. We just found out that Phase 2 of the Expo Line, they did a survey of the riders, and nearly 50% of them, nearly 50% of them have switched from automobile to the train. And the Expo Line Phase 2 is already at 70% of its 20-30 ridership projections. Voters and residents of Los Angeles County are hungry for more options, and Measure M is something that would give it to them. This is on the ballot in November, and this would do so many things for the city of Los Angeles. It would expand rail and rapid transit. It would improve traffic flow. It would help us repair local roads and retrofit bridges. It would help us synchronize traffic signals. It would improve connections to our schools and our commercial hubs and to our airports. It would create 465,000 jobs here in Los Angeles County. It would dramatically improve the passenger experience by putting money and resources into state-of-good repair and expanding service. It would keep fares low for seniors and students and for the disabled. And in 2018, it is expected that we, the city of Los Angeles, would get $56 million in local return. This is something that would enhance all modes of transportation in the city of Los Angeles and in the county, as well as improve goods movement. This is a huge opportunity to relieve traffic congestion, to reduce pollution, and to make quality of life better for all of us. If you are someone who relies on public transportation or wants to use public transportation, if you are a senior or disabled or a student who wants fares low, if you are an elected official or someone who cares about our city budget and is desperate for more resources to fix our traffic problems or to pave our streets and fix our sidewalks, this measure is manna from heaven, and I strongly urge that we support it. We've invited here today to speak to us the new CEO, a little over a year now, so not so new anymore, Mr. Phil... so new anymore, Mr. Phil Washington. Mr. Kocorian and I, who serve on the Metro Board along with Mayor Garcetti and Jackie DuPont Walker, had the opportunity to hire this guy, and he is a smart and visionary leader who is making sure that Metro is a nimble, innovative, smart agency that is finishing and delivering on the promises it has made to folks here in Los Angeles. So I wanted to introduce Phil to everybody and have him explain a little bit to us about what this is on the ballot and what a difference it'll mean for us and for our districts. Thank you.
Okay, well, he is smart and innovative, especially when he hired Patty that used to work for me. That shows. But I wanted, before we start, I want to see if Mr. Kocorian, since you do represent us on the board, if maybe you'd like to speak prior to...
I'll be happy to wait until after the presentation.
Okay, all right. So with that said, good to see you, sir.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you to the City Council for allowing us to talk just a little bit about Measure M and answer any questions that you may have. This Measure M, the LA County Traffic Improvement Plan, is a bottoms-up approach, a bottoms-up approach where we went out to the various subregions in terms of the projects that are listed in the plan. We went out to the various subregions and asked them to identify and prioritize their own projects. We took a look at those projects, we sequenced those projects as a baseline, and we presented that to our board. The elements of this measure, and Councilman Bonin talked a little bit about it, new rail and bus rapid transit projects, new highway projects, enhanced bus and rail service, local streets and active transportation, and bikeways and pedestrian improvements, keeping fares affordable for seniors, students, persons with disability, maintenance and replacement of aging systems. We talk about bridges and tunnels. This has that in there, the state of good repair. We believe that this is a balanced transportation plan that includes all modes of transportation. We also are of the opinion that some of the projects, the capital projects that are in the plan, the sequencing of those projects is merely a baseline. We have included in our ordinance acceleration-type things, that we can accelerate other projects if it does not negatively impact existing projects. We believe this half-cent sales tax and also the extension of the current Measure R sales tax will lift all boats, if you will, lift all boats in terms of job creation. You heard earlier, 465,000 jobs will be created. That is from the Los Angeles Economic Development Corps, and it's not from us. But we believe that working with the community colleges as we're doing right now will help prepare people to work on these projects for the next generation. We have been very, very aggressive in our approach to small and minority and women and veteran-owned businesses to make sure that they can participate in this massive program. The local return component that's in this program returns money, as Councilman Bonin just talked about, returns funds back to the 88 cities in the county so they can do their own local repairs, they can do their own local street improvements and sidewalks and potholes. In terms of innovation, we have addressed that issue. We understand that we don't know what the technology will be even five years from now, and so we have a provision in our plan to allow for creativity and allow for innovation in our various projects. The progress to date, and this was mentioned a little bit earlier, people talk about infrastructure, and they talk about how funding will be spent. I think this year is a great example of what we've done. We've opened up two rail lines, the Gold Line out to, from Azusa, all the way out to Azusa. We opened up the Expo Line. We are halfway complete with the Crenshaw Project that will travel through South Los Angeles and Inglewood. We are working on the line that goes out west eventually and ultimately to the UCLA campus and the VA campus. We're working on what we call the Regional Connector right downtown here that will allow for a one-seat ride from Azusa all the way to Long Beach. So we believe, Mr. President, that we have presented a very, very balanced approach. We believe that this plan is sustainable with state-of-good repair pieces. We believe that this plan is balanced in such a way that it will address the transportation infrastructure needs for the next 40 to 50 years. And that concludes my short presentation, and I am open to any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Kocorian, and then I'm going to call on Mr. Sadio and Mr. Buscagno. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Washington. I certainly don't have any questions, but I have a couple of comments. When I was growing up in Los Angeles, we were the car capital of the United States. It was the way the rest of the world looked at Los Angeles. It was almost a stereotype that Angelinos would never get out of their cars. And as I was growing up, my mom would and dad would tell me nostalgic stories about the old days when we had red cars that could get you all over Los Angeles, and those seemed like, that seemed like ancient history. And no one realistically believed that Angelinos would ever actually get out of their car and get into transit, until we started building it. And once the blue line went in, and then in the valley, once the red line went in, once the orange line was built, we saw the tremendous success of having people rushing to take transit, having people so eager to take this transportation option that almost all of those lines were well over capacity almost immediately. Now, this is with a system that isn't even mature yet. You can get a number of places on our system, but you can't get everywhere. With Measure M, because of this grassroots approach that Mr. Washington just described, we will be able to fund all of the most important transit priorities for every single part of this county, and that will allow us to build a system that interconnects, that's mature, that allows you to get every place that you need to go, that connects home, work, entertainment, and, at long last, will relieve us of our dependency on cars as our mode of transportation. Now, there are a number of worthy measures on the November ballot, and, in fact, there's a lot of measures on the November ballot. And one concern I have is that voters may look at this, and they may say, "Well, look at all these things. There's so many things on there, and they're costing us money, and it's going to be too expensive," and so on and so forth. Well, in response to that, I would just say this. Each of us probably drove today, or we will drive, on a freeway that was built by a leader of the past who saw the importance of building the foundation for the future. Many of us attended a University of California campus that was built by leaders who saw the importance of investing in the future. Every single thing that we do as a society that is transformative and that matters means making decisions now that we will see the benefit of for decades and decades to come. That's the opportunity that we have with Measure M. And when it comes to the cost, let's just try to quantify this a little bit so that people can keep in perspective what the cost is of the benefits that were described so eloquently by Mr. Bonin and Mr. Washington. A half-million jobs, a mature transit system, all of these benefits, what does that cost an average Angelino? About 25 bucks a year. I have, right here in my hand, the daily investment that Angelinos will have to make for Measure M, for this investment in changing our future. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight cents. Eight cents buys you the transportation system that we need for the 21st century. I think that's a pretty good investment in building a half-million jobs, building a transit system that works, and building a better future for our children.
Thank you.
I ask for your high vote.
Thank you. No, wait, now, come on now, Ms. McAllister, last warning. Okay, you got to sit there. We listen to you, you have to listen to us. Mr. Sadio?
Mr. President, let me join you in commending the leadership of Phil Washington. He is both a leader and he's both accessible. He demonstrated in the strategy that they implemented, this grassroots strategy of going out to the communities and listening to what the communities have to say. He is to be commended, and of course, the team that he's built around him, including Patty Soto, who you know very well from the crucibles of the Capitol, has demonstrated his leadership. You know, members, it's, to me, as simple as Mr. Kocorian has laid it out, we really don't have a choice. If we want to be a great city, and if we want to have a great region, we have to have the transportation infrastructure that is part of Measure M. There is no choice. If you compare us to other cities, if you have an ability to go and look at other cities around the world or in our country, it's amazing how modest we are about public transportation. It is shocking. We were in Philadelphia for the Democratic Convention this summer, Mr. President. We did not use private transportation. We took a train every day by choice, by choice, because it was the most convenient thing to do, to go to the convention every day. We could get up out of our hotel, we could go walk over to the station and go directly to the convention. We don't have that capacity here in Los Angeles, not yet. Measure R was a great step forward. I'm proud of the work that we did on Measure R. I'm proud of the fact that we were part of a coalition when I was in the Senate that was bicameral, bipartisan, and brought in broader regions of the area to make Measure R a success. But Measure R was simply the starting point. This now is the next step forward. If we want to build a great city and build a great region, if we want equity in transportation, which is so key and so important in a city that has so many poor and working poor people, I rise to speak on behalf of them. Those who are public transit dependent will benefit the most from Measure M. Those who rely on the buses, who rely on the trains, to go clean houses, to go clean hotels, to prepare the restaurants for the participation of consumers in our sectors of our economy that are dependent, all those depend on public, many of them depend on public transportation. Now, you know I'm an advocate for reality, recognizing that the fact of the matter is we still are very car-dependent. That won't change for a while, but it won't change without Measure M. Now, the fact of the matter is I've been a big advocate for driver's licenses for immigrant motorists, because I want them to drive legally, and I want them to have their own choice. But the other fact of the matter is, is that many immigrants who do have vehicles and who do have driver's licenses choose and prefer to choose public transportation. And so this is important to them, to your housekeepers, to the maids, to the cooks, to all those who are part of the service economy. They are dependent upon this. Janitors who clean homes on the West Side but live in the southeast corridor are dependent upon this. Cooks who live in the San Fernando Valley and work at Staples Arena or in downtown Los Angeles are dependent upon this. Maids who live in East Los Angeles and need a quick, short route to Pasadena to go clean homes and take care of other people's children need this. So this is a matter that's important to the working poor and the poor of this region. We should do all that we can to make sure the public understands this is a generational opportunity. What is on the map is a measure of the growth, the DNA growth of this region is what's on the map today. And so we can see for the next 40 years what we can and what we will accomplish with the passage of Measure M. And so, members, I stand to join, obviously, my colleagues. Mr. Bonin, thank you for your leadership on this. We should do all that we can to build the infrastructure, the transportation infrastructure that matches the hopes and aspirations of all those who come to this great city. People throughout the world come here because they know this is the place, the one place in the world that you can come and realize your greatest hopes and aspirations, but they are amazed when they do get here. People who ride daily in Mexico City on a train for a dime are amazed when they get here and find out that there's no tren for them to get on.
Check your time.
People who ride buses throughout great cities around the world come here and are surprised when they get here and find there's no bus for them to get on that takes them directly to where they need to go. That's what's been lacking in the greatness of this city. Now's the opportunity for us to realize it. I also encourage everyone to vote for Measure M. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Steve? I mean, Mr. Buscagno?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to, I'll take you way back to 2011 or '12 when I first got here. I too want to rise and recognize the work of our colleagues, Mr. Bonin, Mr. Kocorian, and our mayor on the MTA Board. This was not an easy task to put together a measure, Mr. Washington and your team, that works for everyone, and even more so today. You have some folks who are concerned about this measure throughout this entire county. In fact, I was one of those folks who was vocal about the local return dollars not being enough, because, Mr. President, you've tasked me with chairing Public Works, my duty, my obligation, to fix our infrastructure, our streets and our sidewalks, and working with my colleagues on this council to do just that. Equally important is to provide the, and expand our public transportation network. I, as many of you know, followed my YouTube channel and experienced a multimodal experience leaving my house without taking a car, riding my bike to the nearest bus stop, taking the bus into the red line, and taking that red line here to council. Took me about an hour and a half. I also rode my bike to work here, from San Pedro, the southernmost tip of the city, straight to downtown Los Angeles. Took me a while to get down here, but I got it done. Most recently, I had an event in San Dimas on a Friday night, and I took the Gold Line, which was pretty impressive. And I told myself, "Let's see how many people use this Gold Line." And it was packed. I'm glad I got off right here off of, what's his, Alameda? And I got a seat, we got to Metro, and it was flooded with people. And I was laughing at the cars who were stuck in traffic on the adjacent freeway on my way to San Dimas. I was waving at them as we were rolling along the Gold Line. But equally important is the importance of ensuring that we have adequate local return dollars. And I want to thank Metro and my colleagues on the board and the mayor for moving that needle. I wasn't happy with that local return percentage that was being initially proposed. That needle's been moved since we've proposed, or you've proposed, Measure M, to the point where we're seeing more local return dollars, and I thank you for that on behalf of the city. Our local street network is the most basic foundation of our regional transportation system, and everyone uses the streets, bicyclists. In fact, I just saw Salita Reynolds on the Bike Share Program. She was riding down the street on the way in. I don't know if this was planned, knowing that we have Measure M before us, but every day she uses it. But our streets are in very bad shape, and I want to thank Mr. Engler. Mitch and I led this Save Our Street LA initiative a couple of years back, and we felt that it wasn't the appropriate time to strike and ask for voters to pitch in even more so in the city of Los Angeles to fix our failing streets. Nearly a third of our streets are so damaged that the Bureau of Street Services has made a strategic decision to halt all maintenance on them in order to focus limited resources on streets that we can preserve and save. And Azariah's here, thank you for your leadership with the Bureau of Street Services. So our strategy for maintaining streets is akin to a doctor amputating a leg in order to save the patient, and this is not a viable long-term strategy for a world-class city like Los Angeles. And without an influx of money, the Bureau must focus on streets whose usable lifespan can be preserved with regular maintenance techniques like slurring, slurry sealing, and resurfacing. And we have a third of our streets that are in DNF condition, that we require more extensive repair, reconstruction, because of the base, the subbase, are no longer able to support the surface layer of asphalt, as we all know, and as you've heard us here in council. The primary causes of this are excessive vehicle weight, including a lot of the metro buses that traverse through our streets, or the infiltration of water under the street. Slurry sealing and resurfacing prevent the latter. Now, if this council doesn't make an investment of $3.86 billion to repair those streets, they'll continue to disintegrate until they reach the point where they're no longer usable. And if you think traffic is bad now, imagine what would happen if a third of our street network is taken out of service. And already, the condition of our streets is imposing a hidden tax of over $1,000 a year on vehicle owners by accelerating depreciation, increasing fuel consumption, and increasing vehicle repair costs. The impacts of the city's budget as well, this definitely impacts the city's budget as we have a large fleet of vehicles that must be maintained, as well as paying out claims for damage and lawsuits. Quite, just bottom line, the status quo is not acceptable, is not acceptable, rather. So Measure M presents a unique opportunity to solve this problem through local return dollars. I want to thank Chairman of our Transportation Committee, Mr. Bonin. As you all know, I have a motion in to dedicate two-thirds of the local return dollars, if Measure M's pass, to fixing our streets. I also want to thank Mr. Blumenfeld, who also has an interest in his proposal of ensuring that these local return dollars get back to fixing our infrastructure and our streets throughout the city of Los Angeles. Ms. Rue shared a letter with me just yesterday on the importance in supporting the local, the two-thirds of those local return dollars to be dedicated to fixing our streets. And I'm working alongside Mr. Bonin on some active transportation projects as well to make sure we deliver those local return dollars to ATP programs.
Look at your time, Joe.
The time to act is now, and I urge you all to support this critical investment in the very foundation of our transportation system. Thank you, Mr. President, for letting me go over a few minutes.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. O'Farrell, and then we'll move Mr. Price after O'Farrell. So, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Washington, Ms. Soto, thank you for your work on this. Also, our colleagues that are representing us on the Metro, Mr. Bonin and Mr. Krikorian, thanks for your incredible work here. You know, colleagues, necessity is the mother of invention. We need Measure M to pass, absolutely. You know, we have, for the first time in a generation, a city-county approach to transit. A generation ago, decisions were made in different silos that resulted in no transit to the airport and a host of other issues. I think that a generation ago, they got our transit goals about half right. Well, I think with Measure M, we're going to get it completely 100% right. We must have a micro approach, and that's where the local return comes in, and then a macro approach, because we are an integrated region as never before. Now, one really great thing about the local return is the creation of additional dash routes. And I really want to talk about that for just a moment. From Glassell Park on Fletcher Drive, very near where I live, we desperately need a dash route. And some years ago, when the city had funding to create new dash routes, that route was one of the finalists for funding. But we haven't had funding to create new routes in over a decade, some 14 years. From Glassell Park to Hollywood to Westlake to Atwater Village to East Hollywood, we need additional dash routes in my district and inarguably for the rest of the city. This will result in funding for additional dash routes. Now, when the Expo Line, on its first day of operation, my partner George and I actually were able to take from the Gold Line to the Expo Line to Santa Monica for lunch in the middle of the day. I want to make sure that we can provide that experience for everyone. Now, it's not easy to do that from where I live, but those types of trips where you can leave your car behind will be much easier with the passage of Measure M. And what I would like voters to think of, because I have a feeling I know how this is going to go around this horseshoe, and I think it pertains well, but what I want voters to think about is, you have an opportunity to vote for a measure where you get a say in what kind of city, what kind of region we want Los Angeles to become. Are we going to become that world-class destination, that world-class city in which quality of life is improved because our transit options are vastly improved? And every world-class city has a vast transit presence, and that's what I want for us as well. It's not just our economy, it's not just the arts, it's not just tourism, it's also these options for local residents. Now, I don't love driving a car, but I have to drive a car virtually everywhere I go most of the time, not always, but most of the time. Now, imagine a city wherein you can leave your car at home a couple of days a week. And I can envision, even where I live, with some complicated transit options, that being possible. And that's the kind of city that I think Angelenos are ready for. And as I started with, necessity is the mother of invention. We need this to pass so that we can create the kind of transit-oriented options that we have so desperately needed for a long, long time. So I would urge voters to take a look at Measure M in this crowded ballot, as you talked about, Mr. Krikorian, and really winnow down your choices, but please leave this at the top of your list, because it's going to be good for the region, it's going to be good for the city, it's going to be good for the health and well-being of the neighborhood where you live. I also urge a unanimous "I" vote on this item. Thank you.
Mr. Price, or you, Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to just thank the members around this horseshoe who have been so instrumental in advocating for the kind of positive, progressive transportation policies that really do impact the quality of life in our city. Want to recognize the work of the board for its leadership. And, Mr. Washington, your singular leadership, you really made a big difference in a short period of time. I'm excited to support Measure M for lots of reasons, but one reason is certainly the development we are seeing in South L.A. along the Blue Line. You know, for the first time, we've got some housing coming up, affordable and market rate, hotels been proposed at one site. So we're excited about the benefits of rural mobility will be in the area. In many ways, as you know, the Metro is like the new CRA. I mean, you know, the ability to pump dollars into communities around transportation, residential hubs is critically important. So we talked about the improvement of traffic flow and the improvement for roads and the jobs that are going to be generated. But talk a little bit about the business opportunities. You certainly referenced an attention to small minority women-owned firms getting a piece of this pie, this multi-billion-dollar pie over the next several years. But talk about some specific things you're doing to just ensure that small businesses are able to take advantage and to offer services to provide this exciting opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely, Councilman, and thank you for the question. We have been very, very active and aggressive in our small and minority business goals. We have set aggressive goals on projects. We have unbundled big projects and broke them up to provide more opportunities for small businesses. We have stressed and encouraged mentor protege programs of the primes. We have created a tiered program for small businesses to compete against like annual revenue firms like themselves. We have created a mid-size business program where if a minority business gets too large for the threshold for SBE or DBE, they really don't have anywhere to go. They can't compete against the large primes, and they've graduated from the smaller business programs. So that mid-size program becomes very, very important for businesses that are growing. We have eliminated what I call good faith efforts. Good faith efforts are efforts where the prime contractor says, we did everything we could to get a small or minority business on this project, but we just can't find them. We have gotten rid of those good faith efforts, and we have said that we will help you find them. So we have been aggressive in this approach. We have also encouraged the creation of joint ventures. We have said that we want to see small businesses become primes or large contractors, and we want the primes to sub to the small businesses. And so we have been very, very aggressive in our approach. We will continue to do that. And I think the other big piece of this is the individual jobs and making sure that people are trained to work on our projects. This is the work that we're doing with the community colleges around the county as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Blumenfeld.
Thank you. I rise in strong support of this. And, Mr. Washington, I want to thank you for the work that you've been doing on this, Soto as well. I mean, you started this job, and you just jumped right in. This is probably the most important thing for the future of your agency and for your legacy to make this happen, and I think it's critically important. I wanted to talk to it briefly from perspective of someone who represents the West San Fernando Valley, represents, the valley in general has felt on these measures that it hasn't gotten its fair share of Measure R. I've been very attuned to that and throughout this process, and you've been great about allowing the COGS in the different regions to take some leadership in deciding what would be the priorities. And I worked very hard with Mr. Krikorian on the COG, and specifically, I chaired the Valley Transportation COG, to make sure that we would have tangible items in this measure that would benefit the valley and benefit the West San Fernando Valley. And there's a couple of big ones that I think are game changers, and I wanted to, and are part of the reason why I am supporting this. One is the public transit is the train. The train going from the valley to the West Side. Public transit in, basically along the 405, taking cars off the 405, is a game changer for this city, being that that's one of the most congested intersections in the nation's, is a game changer for the nation. That alone is a big deal for the San Fernando Valley. And then when it comes to the Orange Line, this is a line that folks thought would see eight, 12,000 riders when it was first built. It immediately hit capacity. We're seeing 30,000 riders a day. And this measure would not only ultimately convert that to rail, but in the immediacy, it's going to, we were working with you, and I appreciate that, we're speeding up the time on that so that we can immediately, within two years, do grade separation in four or five of the major intersections, so that we can see the capacity increase and the speed increase. And that is going to be a game changer for the San Fernando Valley, and particularly for the West Valley. Very important. We've heard a lot of talk about local return.
Yes.
And one thing I'm still working on with this council is, you know, local return is great, and the 56 million we're talking about for next year is incredible for Los Angeles. But Los Angeles is such a big city. In fact, a single district in Los Angeles is bigger than every single city of the 88 cities in population, except for Long Beach, that are getting local return in this measure. So my goal is I want to see that local return not only come to this city, but be divided up a little bit more regionally, and even by district potentially. Because as I mentioned, a single district is bigger than every single of the 88, of 87 out of the 88 cities, or 86 out of the other 87 cities that are out there. So this is an important measure. It's one that I'm firmly behind, that we had an important process in the valley with the COG and the Transportation Committee getting together. There was a lot of compromise made in terms of that, with the CSUN getting the buses to go there, all very important. At the end of the day, this measure, as great as it is, it's a compromise for everybody. There are a lot of folks throughout, and even in my area, who feel like they should get a little bit more here, a little bit more there. But this measure can be transformative for this city, and that's why I'm 100% for it and why I thank you for the hard work that you've done, and I urge an "I" vote.
Thank you. Ms. Martinez.
I think everyone's, everyone's already said everything about how important Measure M is, but I just want to say thank you to Mr. Washington. You and I have had, on several occasions, very sincere conversations, keeping it really real, in terms of what this means for my district. And I often talk about my dad, who's 84 years old, who never drove in his life, and I grew up in Pacoima, he still lives there. And when I first got braces, when I was fifth, in the fifth grader at Pacoima Elementary School, my father would have to take me through the orthodontist in Van Nuys, and we would take the bus. So when we talk about what the valley used to look like, and when we talk about the valley's fair share, my experience as a 10-year-old with a father who never drove in his life and washed dishes for 30 years in a restaurant, and would have to take mass transit from Pacoima to Sherman Oaks, to me, that's keeping it real. And so this, to my district, would transform not only what the boulevard looks like, what we used to call the downtown shopping center and the civic center in Van Nuys would panorama what the city used to look like. And for the many transit-dependent folks that I grew up with, like my dad, who haven't seen its fair share in the northeast San Fernando Valley, that's what this means to me. And so when Mrs. Sadio talks about the janitors and the housekeepers and people who take care of our children, who have to get to work every day, those are the people we represent. Those are my parents. And so this is long overdue. We didn't get the subway to the foothill, it stopped in North Hollywood. The Orange Line is a much added benefit to the San Fernando Valley, but it certainly doesn't connect people to the northeast San Fernando Valley. So this is about making things right, making the northeast valley whole, and finally connecting it to the rest of your lines, because we have been waiting for over 40 years. I just want to commend you and your staff. Thank you so much for working with me. You know how much I want this light rail on Van Nuys Boulevard, and you know what I'm going to do to make sure that it gets done in a timely manner. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I just want to rise in strong support of Measure M and give a big shout-out to our representatives on the MTA Board, Mr. Krikorian and Mr. Bonin, and also Ms. Jackie Dupont-Walker, who doesn't sit around this horseshoe, but is everywhere important decisions are being made about South L.A. and beyond. Mr. Washington, I wanted to ask you two things specifically related to MTA and Measure M going forward. One is about the workforce. I know you've talked about small businesses here, but I want to ask about the workforce, and then about community development, kind of going along with what Ms. Martinez just raised. 456,000 jobs was the number I thought I heard. That's literally two generations of work. I mean, I don't know how many unemployed people we have in Los Angeles, but I doubt it's 400,000. So we can make a serious dent in our workforce situation here in L.A. County. I wanted you to talk about the specific efforts to include disadvantaged workers, in particular local workers. I know I sat with you while you walked into Skid Row to talk to organizations about preparing homeless people to work on projects that are ongoing now. So if you could just talk some about that, I'd appreciate it. And then the second thing is transit-oriented development in transit-oriented communities. I know there's a commitment to MTA to help some housing get developed around the new stations. I wanted you to talk about that and what the commitment is around affordability as we confront a big housing crisis, that this, making the city easier to get around, will create even more of a demand for living in Los Angeles and Los Angeles County. So I would love to hear your thoughts on both those things. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Workforce, we have been very, very aggressive and indeed passionate about how to address or how we want to address the workforce issue. One of the things that, if you look around the country, and if you look right here in L.A. County, the concern is whether we will have a qualified workforce to do all of the infrastructure work that is needed, not just here in L.A. County, but throughout the country. And so we've been very, very deliberate in our approach to, one, reaching out and outreach to communities, including communities of color, to identify people that we can train or the city colleges can help us train to do this infrastructure work. It's needed, and we are not talking about exclusively just a flag person on a construction site. We are talking about helping young people develop the skills and careers that are needed to build the infrastructure in L.A. County. The other piece of this is, we want, after that training, we want people to be able to work anywhere on infrastructure in the careers that we train them in. So the ability to move around not just L.A. County, but perhaps move around the country to do infrastructure. So we are looking to partner with ex-offender programs. We are looking to partner with the functional homeless to provide training or to work with that training. We are looking to do a memorandum of agreement with various We are looking to do a memorandum of agreement with various nonprofit entities to create a pipeline of workers to work on Measure M projects. We have already started this through our Operation Shovel Ready Plan where we are doing projects within our current financial resources in preparation for Measure M. So the workforce piece is huge to us and it will remain so. Community development, transit-oriented communities, the approach that we have taken and the approach that the LA Metro Board has taken is probably the most progressive and aggressive approach on transit-oriented communities in the country. We have created a transit-oriented community demonstration program and a pilot program to look at various areas within the county, identify those areas that are around transit infrastructure or around transit stations and look to see how we can work with the community to build out and develop those areas, not just us plopping in and putting a station there, but working with the communities to figure out how to develop that. So we have looked at a two-mile radius around various stations to see how affordable housing can be advanced. The LA Metro Board has said on property that we own that 35%, if it's residential, 35% will be affordable housing. That is the most aggressive percentage in the country today in terms of transit properties. So we have been very, very forceful and very, very aggressive. We think that this Measure M plan could be similar to the work or the WPA from after the Depression where infrastructure work was so important and it was advanced to the point where unemployment, there was no more unemployment. We had full employment. I believe we will have full employment with Measure M in LA County. And so in order to do that, we have to make sure that people are ready to work.
Mr. Keretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think the reason I care the most about this has already been touched on, which is every time you do another project, the value isn't just on that line. It's really an exponential increase in the ability to use the whole system as we get closer and closer for more and more people to get everywhere where they need to go. There are some big holes in the system. Probably the biggest in my view is the fact that there is no connector from the west side to the San Fernando Valley. That hole is filled. There are so many others that are filled that I believe a number of people will actually abandon their cars. And over time, I think the prognosis for that looks good because we know millennials seem to have a tendency to want to do that anyway, even without access to a full system. I think once we have a system that gets you almost everywhere, which we will once all of these projects are built, this will be a different Los Angeles than that that we're used to. I think traffic will be dramatically impacted and parking and perhaps the most important in the long run, I think this will also take a big bite out of the climate change generating greenhouse gases that we generate. So I think this is the most important measure that we've seen on the ballot in a long time. Probably one of the most important on this crowded ballot and we absolutely have to put it on and we absolutely have to pass it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Keretz. And as we wrap this up, just let me say, I do want to make a shout out, a mention to Jackie Dupont-Walker, longtime community activist, for all of the hard work that she's done on the MTA. And to say that we're so proud of Mr. Kocorian and Mr. Bonin. We depend on you. You know, sure the mayor selected you, but we, this council, depends on you and your council. So we appreciate all of the hard work that you've done. So with that said, Mr. Kocorian, Mr. Bonin, I want to call for a vote. Mr. Clerk or Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations. Mr. Weezer. I'd like to, oh, in fact, right now, as Mr. Weezer is coming forward, let's ask for a vote of reconsideration on item two. You hear me, Mr. Clerk? So on item two, let's reconsideration, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Now let's actually vote on the item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
And forthwith on that item per Mr. Mitch O'Farrell. Mr. Weezer, the floor is yours.
Good morning.
If I can get your attention, please get your attention.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues and guests. I am very proud to be standing here today along with my colleagues, Councilmember Gil Sedia and Councilwoman Nuri Martinez, as we kick off the Latino Heritage Month celebrations in the city of Los Angeles that will last from September 15th through October 15th. And as you know, Latino Heritage Month celebrates the diversity of our great city, which includes the vast and varied contributions that Latinos have made and continue to make in all aspects of culture in Los Angeles, including in the arts, architecture, government, education, politics, and literature. As part of today's presentation, we will be honoring Sylvia Mendez, whose parents, Felicitas and Gonzalo, won a 1947 lawsuit filed on her behalf against the Orange County Board of Education after a so-called whites-only school would not admit Sylvia because she was Latina. The actions of Sylvia and her parents paved the way for the infamous Brown versus Board of Education ending segregation in schools throughout the United States. And today, we will also welcome our new Mexican Council General, who came to us all the way from Ireland, where he last served. He has been here only 50 days, but he looks like an Angelino already. He's got a little tan, grew a little beard. So he looks like he's been here for a very long time. He fits right in and he has hit the ground running. We will welcome him in just a moment, Council General Carlos Garcia de Alba. Bienvenido. And lastly, as part of today's celebration and presentation, we will unveil the artwork for the Department of Cultural Affairs Latino Heritage Month calendar and culture guidebook along with the Latino Heritage Month tap card. But for now, let me introduce Councilwoman Nuri Martinez, who will share a few words.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer, for being today's Latino Heritage Month presentation. I'm honored to be joined by you and Councilmember Sedia in this presentation. Quiero dar la bienvenida a Carlos Garcia de Alba, el cónsul de México, que tomará este cargo este año. Bienvenido y muchas gracias por celebrar con nosotros, señor. I'm very excited to be here with my friend Sylvia Mendez. A few years ago, her and I were honored by inner-city struggle and I haven't seen Sylvia since then and it's great to see you now. You look great. It was a very humbling experience, given her background and how Sylvia paved the way for more, for a more just educational system by combating segregation and discrimination. Sylvia was, just wanted to go to school when she was little and her parents just wanted her to have better opportunities for her and other children. The courage and the struggle this family showed signifies the important role that Latinos play in the fight for civil rights for all Americans. Latino Heritage Month is a perfect opportunity for us to honor those that took on the courage and the fight against prejudice and segregation in public schools and society in general. In a country that faces daily attacks from those in very powerful positions against Latinos, it is very important that we stand together and we fight against these injustices. We must speak up, we must vote, and we must be counted in the same spirit that Sylvia's parents did many years ago. We must stand up for those who, those against who want to segregate our schools, to build walls in between our communities, the same way that Sylvia's parents fought for their children and for other kids to attend school. It is important for families, both parents and our youth, to make sure that together we can shape obstacles and that encounter prejudice in our society. There are people in this country who want to call Latinos all sorts of things and we watch it every day on television. But with today's presentation for Latino Heritage Month, we want to be able to celebrate the qualities and the contributions that Latinos have made in this country through strength, determination, strong families, hard work, passion, loyalty, and faith to this great country and what we have contributed today and in years to come. We want to be able to celebrate our heritage with the rest of the country. It takes one dream like Sylvia's parents did many years ago to demonstrate that family and faith for country can overcome any obstacle. I want to congratulate her for being honored and we've remained good friends to her and her kid, her daughter who's here. Thank you very much for having me and thank you very much, Mr. Weezer, for launching our Latino Heritage Month. We look forward to a fabulous celebration tomorrow. Thank you very much. Or I should say on Friday.
Thank you very much and I'm very happy to have Nuri Martinez join us in the council because of the four Latinos, now three, two of us are from Sacatecas, Mexico. Nuri and myself come from the same region in Mexico. So, and now I'd like to introduce Councilmember Gil Sedia. Councilmember.
Mr. Sedia.
From Durango and Chihuahua. Let me say to you that it is difficult for us to fully appreciate the presence of Sylvia Mendez. We have grown up with images of the National Guard marching in, young African-American boys and girls to go to schools that would be integrated. But before that, there was Sylvia Mendez. The Mendez versus Westminster case is the precursor to Brown versus the Board of Education. And from Brown versus the Board of Education, we moved to Plyler v. Doe, a Texas case that spoke specifically about the importance of educating immigrant students and about the importance that education, public education plays in elevating those who are marginalized in our society. From Plyler v. Doe, we moved to Proposition 187. In California, there was an election that tried to deny a whole range of basic human services to the undocumented community and it passed. It was a moment not unlike today where jingoism and nativism and racism carried the day. From 187, it was the basis for a settlement that Governor Gray Davis laid forth to put that case aside. Fortunately for us, the Constitution transcends that type of populism. And from there, it served as the constitutional basis for the California Dream Act. And so we are looking and standing next to a giant, a giant in the civil rights movement and the growth of our Constitution, of the First Amendment, of education and the light that education plays in our society. Sylvia Mendez, we are standing on your shoulders. Nuri, thank you for bringing to our attention what is so omnipresent today. Every single day ignorance has elevated to now the position of a presidential candidate. Ignorance, bullying, racism, sexism, homophobia, attacks against the disabled is now accepted. It's the new normal. And we stand here as a community, our presence, our mere presence, our mere acknowledgement and recognition of our contributions is a rejection of that. The strength of our nation is diversity and tolerance and unity and that is the meaning of our presence here today. Mr. Weezer, thank you for bringing us together. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for all that you will do for us in the next few days. Our mere presence is enough to say, abajo con Donald Trump and arriba con los Estados Unidos. Hispanic Heritage Month.
Thank you, Mr. Sedia. And you know, it's also great to see of the three out of the four, two out of the three Latinos on council, we both grew up in Bull Heights as well. So that's...
Yeah, Ms. Martinez is from Pacoima, right?
There you go.
Let's give Pacoima a shout out.
And now, before we go on in recognizing our honoree, we'd love to show a video to put in context and perspective what Mendez versus Westminster, the role it played in the history of our country. We could roll the video, please.
They finally went to court and when they went to court, they won the first time in the Superior Court. They won and Judge McCormick said that it was totally illegal what they were doing. So he said, "From now on, we will not have segregation." Well, the Westminster School Board decided to appeal.
Judge McCormick's decision in the district court, which is the trial court, and actually a trial did take place over several weeks and several of the schools, districts had testimony and he heard testimony from the kids and he heard testimony from experts. And the critical part of this case is the attorney, David Marcus, he put on evidence not only of the, with the children, but he brought in experts, sociologists and education experts who said that segregation was bad for the children and it gave them a sense of inferiority. It was noted that they wouldn't learn English or be Americanized or learn our culture if they were segregated, they had to be integrated. And so he listened to that and he was the first judge that I've ever read and I've talked to several professors and this case is now mentioned in a lot of law schools in California. This was the first time any judge ever wrote an opinion that said, "Separate is never equal." And he said the separate facilities, even if they were equal, were not permissible under the 14th Amendment based on national origin. Now, the parties agreed that everybody was Caucasian, but what they said was they're discriminated because they're of Mexican or Latin origin. And so that was a huge step in civil rights and it drew the attention of the NAACP, the National Lawyers Guild, and a whole host of other national civil rights groups who filed what are called friend of the court briefs for the appeal.
And they all fought and finally they did win. A few months later, Governor Ward, he was a governor at that time here in California, and he decided that he would desegregate the whole California after this trial, June 1947. So California has always been number one. That was eight years before the Brown versus Board of Education, when the whole nation was desegregated. I love to talk to students. The thing that I tell them is that we live in this wonderful, wonderful country of ours where we have so many opportunities and I am so sad, I tell them that you are not taking advantage of them because so many students are dropping out of high school and they're not even going to high school, college. And I want them to fulfill their destiny, to dream the dream that I am living. Right now, I'm living the American dream and it's possible for everybody in this nation to dream that dream and to fulfill it like I have.
Yo, Mr. President and guests, I'm always touched whenever I'm in the presence of Sylvia Mendez and what she represents not only for Latinos, but all of us here in Los Angeles and the nation. Certainly it reminds us of not only the importance of working towards a unified city and country, no matter what our backgrounds may be, but it also reminds us of the importance that a good education provides for us in getting opportunities to fulfill our American dream, however we would like. dream, however we would like to define that. And certainly Sylvia, who was a child of some parents who were courageous, who decided to challenge what they were told was the standard and how it was going to be, and they decided to stand up, not only fight the school district, but fight the legal system in ensuring that not only their children, but other children have those opportunities as well. Sylvia is the oldest daughter of Gonzales, Gonzalo Mendez, a Mexican immigrant, and Felicitas Mendez, who was of Puerto Rican descent, and they both fought for their children, as was mentioned in the case. In 1942, in Westminster, California, students of Mexican descent were required to enroll in segregated and inferior schools, as was mentioned. When Sylvia was in the third grade, she and her brothers Gonzalo Junior and Jerome were denied admission to the white school near their Westminster home. The Mendez family, along with four other Latino families, fought to integrate the school. Mendez won this case, and as was mentioned, it was the precursor to Brown versus Board of Education. In history classes, we often learn about Brown versus Board of Education, but it is important that we do not overlook its precursor and what that meant to opening the doors for the Board, Brown versus Board of Education ruling at the Supreme Court level. No one could have carried the torch of Felicitas and Gonzalo Mendez better than Sylvia Mendez herself. Her parents battled, battle allowed Sylvia to pursue her own education and professional success. After this battle, she went on and got an Associate's of Arts degree in nursing from Orange Coast Community College, and a Bachelor of Science degree in nursing, and a certificate in public health from California State University, Los Angeles. Sylvia Mendez worked for 33 years as a nurse, and she has continued her parents' legacy by fighting for equality wherever she goes, speaking to students. And, uh, as was mentioned, President Barack Obama gave her in 2011 the Presidential Medal of Freedom. It is the highest civilian honor, and a U.S. postage stamp commemorates the 60th anniversary of the appellate victory for Mendez versus Westminster. And there are no fewer than two public schools named after Gonzalo and Felicitas Mendez, one of those schools located in Boyle Heights, and it is a school that we fought for when I was on the Board of Education. And in fact, the district had money to build a school in the overpopulated Boyle Heights, uh, overpopulated schools, but yet had not built a school there in over eighty, a new high school in over eighty years. And when we built that school, it was aptly named after Felicitas and Gonz, Gonzalo and Felicitas Mendez to signify and show the struggle that we go through to ensure that our kids get a quality education. For these and many more reasons, we honor Sylvia Mendez and recognize her invaluable efforts as a civil rights activist, as the City of Los Angeles Latino Heritage Month honoree, and I want to thank Sylvia for empowering our youth with your story of strength, courage, and community activism. Congratulations, Sylvia, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles for being the 2016 Latino Heritage Month honoree. Congratulations.
Ms. Mendez, let me just say, as a person who grew up, a child, I guess, of the civil rights movement, that I don't have the ability to articulate how grateful we are for the work that you and your family did. And I want you to know that the individuals from my community do not have to be taught that your case was a precursor. We know that, and we respect that. And I probably sit in this chair as Ms. Martinez and, and Jose and Gil sit around here because of what you and others did, afforded us an opportunity to equal the playing field by getting a great education. And also, I want to say that I, my heart breaks like yours when we see so many of our own that won't take advantage of this great opportunity. And we, as people, have to recognize that part of these problems are ours, and somehow we have to get our young people to reengage, but we would not be having this discussion if it was not for brave people like your parents and yourself. God bless you, and from the bottom of my heart, thank you. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you. You make me feel very special today. I am so grateful and happy. This isn't about me. I am just a messenger. My parents and the other plaintiffs really had a vision and foresight to take action, and I am so proud to be the daughter of Gonzalo and Felicitas Mendez, because I was only nine, and all I was thinking about was going to play in that beautiful playground in the white school. I was not thinking about what they were really fighting for. I was so lucky to inherit the legacy of what my parents did, opening the door for people of color all over the country to go to school with everyone. Think about that moment. We were all segregated, separate schools, separate bathrooms, signs that said, "You can't sit here, you can't drink here, Mexicans and dogs are not allowed in this restaurant." It was a different world, but I am so lucky for my parents and for the other families. And the other families that were plaintiff in this lawsuit were the Guzman, the Palomino, the Stradas, and Ramirez families. They all joined in in this wonderful lawsuit. I am so happy to be here, and the work that was done 70 years ago was very important. Not only did it benefit me, but it benefited all of you. Thank you so much. Muchisimas gracias por este honor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mendez. And, uh, we also wanted to take this opportunity to introduce to the City Council and to the City of Los Angeles our new Council General from Mexico. As I mentioned earlier, this is his 50th day, and that's something he told me when we saw each other this morning, so he's counting the days that he's been here. But, uh, he, like I said, he's hit the ground running. I saw him at a grand performance event in downtown L.A., enjoying the music, talking to Angelenos, and just taking it all in. He's no stranger to Los Angeles, as now as many of you know, uh, we, many of us live a bicultural life, a bi-national life, uh, here in the United States and Mexico. And so we wanted to take this opportunity to invite him to kick off the Latino Heritage Month, but also to welcome him to the great City of Los Angeles, because after all, we have the most Mexicans here in the City of Los Angeles, second only to Mexico City. And, um, and because of that, we celebrate it, you see us everywhere, but we also are going to remind the Council General that he's going to be very, very busy. Welcome to Senor Carlos Garcia de Alba, welcome.
Mr. Council General, I bet, I bet you like our weather a little better than Ireland, huh?
Indeed.
Welcome, sir.
But yesterday was raining, so the first day I felt a little bit like in Dublin. Good morning, muy buenos dias. Thank you so much for your kind words and the invitation, Jose Weezer, and a big happy birthday.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Well deserved, Sylvia Mendez. Thank you so much for your deep emotional message. Thank you so much. Mr. President, Councilmembers, it's true, it's my 50th day in Los Angeles, in this impressive, outstanding, diverse, vibrant city. I'm a 58-years-old Mexican diplomat. I have been posted in eight different places, cities, in three different continents, but never before I had the privilege, such a privilege, like to represent my country in a city like Los Angeles. It is a big challenge. I'm very conscious about the responsibility that means to represent my country, my people, my government, in the second-largest Mexican city, the second, well, after Mexico City, with, speaking of the amount of Mexicans. Actually, I'm from Jalisco, the city of Guadalajara, neighbor of Zacatecas. And I have to say, in the 130 years of, uh, the existence of this consulate, I'm proudly the first Jalisciense. But, as I, as I said, this is a big responsibility, and I'm ready to work closely, not just with the three Hispanic, Latino councilmembers, Weezer, Cedillo, Martinez, but with all the councilmembers. I'll do my best to contribute in order to, to strengthen links, to build bridges between the City of Los Angeles, this big, huge city, and obviously the Mexican community and the consulate itself. My recognition to Jose Weezer for this initiative, the heritage, the Latino heritage to the City of Los Angeles, that means the contribution of the big Latino, Hispanic, Mexican community to the City of Los Angeles. All and new contributions in every sector, social life, economy, trade, science, arts, tourism, sports, and you name it, we need to keep in mind how important is this link between the City of Los Angeles and the Latino and the Hispanic community. So congratulations for this important initiative, Consejal Weezer. Thank you so much for this privilege of addressing this plenary, Mr. President. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you to all of you for inviting me to attend for the very first time and to address this important plenary. Thank you, congratulations, and see you next Friday for the Mex, these Fridays for the Mexican independence and the Latino, part of the Latino, the month, Latino Heritage. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, and certainly that invitation goes to all. This Friday, we will celebrate the El Grito, which is the celebration of Mexican independence. We're doing something a little different this year. We've invited a number of other Central American countries that also celebrate their El Grito on September, along with Chile. Uh, so we welcome all, we're going to have a great, uh, some great bands, great music, good food, and a lot of dancing, I think, so. And now, oh, by the way, in Los Angeles, the number one state people come from Mexico, it's Jalisco, so another Jalisciense here, you're adding to the numbers here, that's right. And today, we are, uh, are happy to present and unveil the Latino Heritage Month book. I want to thank the general manager from the Department of Cultural Affairs, Danielle Brazel. She had to leave to a longstanding appointment she had, but I do want to invite up here the incredibly talented artist who did the work on the cover, Isaac Belayo, uh, who's here. Welcome, Isaac Belayo, give him a big round of applause. He's also from Jalisco, all right. Uh, he's an incredible tal, uh, artist. His artistic talent definitely runs in Isaac's family while forging his own artistic path and style. Isaac is certainly following in his father's footsteps, Antonio Belayo, who is also featured in the, in the edition of the book and in previous editions as well. It's great to see you continue the tradition and customs. Thank you so much. So we will go over and unveil the, uh, the, the, the book, and we will also ask Nilsa Sedano to join us from the Latino Heritage Foundation. She will unveil the, um, the Latino Heritage Month tap card that, appropriately so, today we supported Measure M. It's the tap card that we use with Metro. They have, uh, worked with us each and every year to, uh, to work to do a Latino Heritage Month tap card to encourage people to take public transportation and support public transportation. So Nilsa Sedano is here. Sir, we will walk over and do the unveiling of both these, uh, these art pieces. If you could join us there?
Drum roll, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes our presentation. I do want to invite everyone, there's a reception in the forecourt. You're welcome there, and each council member received a tap card on your own. The first ride is on us. I know the board members probably have their own cards, but the first ride is on us for each of the tap cards that you received. So thank you so much, and great to kick off the Latino Heritage Month here in the City of Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
Again, thank, thank all of you.
Okay, members, if I can ask everyone to please take their seat. We're going to resume our council meeting. Sergeants, if you can please help me prepare the room to resume our council meeting. Thank you. Members, if I can please ask you to take your seats. We need to resume our council meeting. We have public comment. I'm going to begin calling the first public comment card, Rosie. Rosie, are you here? Is there a person by the name, oh, here she is. Sorry, ma'am, I know it's a little chaotic. We just want to make sure.
We have one man to speak.
If we can please respect Mrs. Rosie's time, she's our next public speaker. Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Rosie Cotto, and I speak today as a CD-11 constituent registered voter and lifelong resident of Sawtelle, Japan Town, not as a West L.A. Sawtelle Neighborhood Council at-large representative nor Plum Committee member. Like the residents who oppose Bundy Village, I oppose the Martin Expo Town Center. In yesterday's Plum Committee meeting, the City Attorney's Directive denied freedom of speech and due process to residents impacted by this mega-development. L.A. has a shortage of affordable, not luxury, housing. This mega-development belongs in downtown L.A., not within a stone's throw of a long-established community of mostly single-family homes. Many Japanese and Japanese-Americans were forced to settle into this area after World War II internment. These forgotten citizens deserve to have their quality of life protected from the out-of-scale development of Martin Expo Town Center. The residents have the right to due process and the right to be heard in a public forum. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Leah Renee. Ms. Renee, are you still here? Followed by Jacqueline Richardson and Robert Lee Addison.
Hi, my name is Leah Renee. I just wanted to know why I got discriminated against, because everybody else that spoke with public comment got to give their general, and I actually had to wait until now. You know, it's apropos, because today's my birthday. It's four years that I have been coming before you, and I have been bullied, discriminated against, prejudiced, harassed, misdirected, and lied to and retaliated against. And unfortunately, I learned yesterday that council member Mike Bonin created a false record and submitted it to the County of Los Angeles to cause me prejudice. So I want to say, because I know there's a lot of good people on this council, I want to remind you the words of Martin Luther King Jr. "History will have to record that the greatest tragedy of this period of social transition was not the strident clamor of the bad people, but the appalling silence of the good people." I ask you to please be good people and stand up and speak on behalf of all people, not just your segregated people.
Thank you, ma'am.
And including me.
Thank you.
I include myself in that, because I.
Your time is up. I appreciate your waiting. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jacqueline Richardson, followed by Robert Addison. Is Mr. Addison here? Good afternoon, Ms. Richardson.
Low-cost housing, zip codes 90013, 90014. This may not be true, I don't know, you have to ask the people involved, but from what I see, everybody in the low-cost housing, 90013, 90014, just have two examples, they don't live there for the full month. Sometimes they're there for five days a month. The management doesn't see them because they have different duties and they're on different floors, but it appears that the people are not all, some of the people are not always there for the full month. So if this is true, and I can't swear that it is true, but I believe by what I see, they're not there, some people are not there except five days a month. If this is true, then full housing isn't real for low-cost housing. Some of the housing are free, but it appears that it's full because the people are there five days a month in other places, rent other units the other times. You have to ask them, because I don't know for sure.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. The next speaker is Robert Lee Addison. Is that person here, Robert Lee Addison? Mr. Clerk, please note that that person is not here, and that concludes public comment. What's before us?
Madam President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred.
The desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? Seeing none, can we please rise for adjourned motions?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues.
I'm sorry, Mr. Buscayno. Mr. Muhammad, I do not have a card for you, sir. I apologize. There was not a card for you. We've already concluded public comment. I don't have a card for you or else I would have called you. You know that I would.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. This is adjourned motion now, Mr. Buscayno, I apologize.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Councilwoman Jerilyn King Henderson, a colleague of mine on the Board of Directors of the National League of Cities. She was a city councilwoman in Troy, Alabama, and served as a member of the National League of Cities 2016 Board Director. She's also held key leadership positions with two NLC constituency groups, the National Black Caucus of Local Elected Officials and Women in Municipal Government. Councilmember Henderson was a dedicated local leader whose service knew no bounds. In addition to her role as a city leader, she served more than 20 years in the U.S. Army Reserve and taught in public school system for 33 years. She provided valuable leadership for cities and towns nationwide through her role on the NLC Board of Directors and was a dear friend of the many city officials and staff who knew her. She's served on the Troy City Council since 2010 and was recently re-elected for her second term in August. Her service to the community and beyond will not be forgotten. May Councilwoman Jerilyn King Henderson rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. Buscayno. Is there any other adjourned motions on my left? Seeing none on my right? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.